And I will start with just asking the group to introduce yourself, your experience that you see as key and the priorities you have in working towards the school board. And I will start with Mr. Hawley.
All right, thanks Kevin, and thank you all for attending this evening. My name's Mike Hawley. And I bring a variety of different experiences to the school board, or will if I'm elected, to the school board. The first is, of course, I grew up in Bismarck, so I understand the, you know, I understand the school system intuitively. I grew up, graduated from Bismarck High. My children went to school in Bismarck. And I was a really active parent for, I still am, for 16 years now. I've been in parent-teacher organizations. I'm on the Century High School Parent Advisory Committee. I've served on several district advisory boards over the years, whether it was looking at boundaries or school closures, principal hires, those kind of things. So I have a, I think, a really good feeling and understanding of the district from a parent perspective. Professionally, I lived in Ghana for a couple of years, West Africa. And the ambassador, at the embassy I worked at, the US ambassador appointed me to the Board of Trustees of the Lincoln Community School. Accra, Ghana, the capital city, was going through almost identical growth that Bismarck is going through. And it was also driven by oil. Of course, Accra is, you know, five million people, so it's considerably larger, but a lot of, there was a lot of similarities between what Bismarck is going through. And we were an international school, so we had 55 countries that were represented in the school. And so we had a lot of diversity, a lot of different great ideas, but we had a lot of different ideas that had to all be balanced. We also had funding issues, because we were funded 100% by private tuition. And so there was always, you know, funding concerns. And I also spent 31, almost 32 years in the North Dakota National Guard. And 20, 20 years of that has been on the full-time side. I just retired. And from that experience, I bring in the ability to develop and to manage strategic planning. I understand the challenges of federal dollars and state dollars, and again, trying to balance all the things that we need to do with all the things that we want to do. And those are a lot of the things I think I bring to this, or bring to the school board. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carol Lee Harper. I have two children, grades kindergarten and second grade, at the new Lincoln Elementary School. And I believe that I can bring the younger generation's perspective to the school board, having been involved in the school system since my oldest started kindergarten three years ago. Being able to watch not only them, but their friends flourish and gain a lot of knowledge, both socially as well as academically, so they can have a great future.
Good evening. My name is Matt Sagzveen, and I too like to think that I bring the younger generation's perspective. I've, I grew up in the district. I went to Highland Acres, Hughes, and graduated from Bismarck High also. And so I have three young boys. Two are currently in the school system, and one will be in the school system in a couple of years. I currently practice law in Bismarck, and I work for the Attorney General. Currently supervise the Natural Resources Division in the Attorney General's office. And in that capacity, I represent state agencies, and I've also represented boards and commissions in different capacities in the Attorney General's office. So four years ago, I decided to run because I wanted to get involved in the boundary process, and I wanted to be involved in hiring a new superintendent. I say that, I guess, facetiously. A lot of that kind of came on as, as we entered into the board, because over the last four years, we've, enrollment has increased by about 1,000 students. So during, during those four years, we've worked hard at, and I would say successfully, managing the boundary process, managing the re, additions to facilities, managing facility review, and facility master plans, and a very successful bond, a bond issue that was approved by the voters in Bismarck. What, I like to think that I bring a style of management that focuses on governance, but also places or constant, also places some concentration on operational accountability and a performance accountability. And that's, it's a difficult thing to gauge with the school system, because as many of you know, it, well, I'll probably get into performance accountability, and we'll talk about some of the federal programs. Thanks.
Well, my name is Scott Halverson, and I'm sorry, I can't bring too much youth. What can I say? Well, anyway, but I, I've been in education for 30-some years, I think it's 37. And you excuse me, I visited dentists this morning, so if I sound a little, not a good time to have an appointment, but it was before this. But anyway, I spent a number of years as a teacher and a coach. I was also a principal in the private school here. I was principal at St. Mary's High School. And the last 11 years before I retired, I was the principal and the director of South Central High School, the alternative school, and the director of the Adult Learning Center. So I've always kind of said, when I ran four years ago, I, you know, I taught kindergarten foyed at one time. Let's go kindergarten to the grave. Let's do the whole ball of wax. And I've been fortunate enough to do that. And I, and I think I bring an educational perspective, and I better be careful there. You know, you know, sometimes you feel, and I never felt this way, but okay, I got an educational background, so I know it all. I can tell you right now, it's been a great learning experience. I think the diversity that we bring to the board, no matter what occupation, we all learn from each other. We all have different perspectives, but we all have the same focus. And, and I think from my standpoint is, what I've seen, you know, we've undertaken a lot. And I think anybody that would have been on the board would have had to do these things. Hiring a new superintendent, the boundaries issues, which was very stressful, but I enjoyed it. That's what the job is. And the building of three new schools plus two other projects, and all of those. And I'd like to see them through. There's a lot more to be done. The voters of Bismarck were wonderful in approving the bond issue. I like to think it was because of a lot of our transparency, and we're open. We got a lot of input, a lot of feedback from the people. And I'd just like to continue with that and serve the people, and more importantly, the kids.
My name is Rissa Williams, and I'm a mother of a seventh grader in the Bismarck Public School system. I'm a graduate of Minot High, please don't hold that against me. We chose to move to Bismarck, and when we came down here, my son started third grade, third school, third town. And we were lucky enough to end up at Riverside, and it was just a wonderful place for us, very welcoming. Very early on, they told us he was so well-adapted, which was just music to my ears. My qualifications, the definition of a school board qualification is high school diploma and Bismarck resident. So we all clearly meet that qualification. My individual qualifications are that I've served on the school level in three different offices, the secretary, the vice president, and the president. I'm currently on the Simley Parent Advisory Council. I'm also a business owner. As a business owner, I was able to hire a stay-at-home mom who wanted to get back into the workforce, but no one could really understand the balance she needed between work and being a full-time mom. I managed to give her some part-time hours. Now she doesn't work for me anymore, she's full-time. I'm an active community volunteer. What I bring to the table is improved communication between the different levels at the school board, from the administrative branch to the educators, to the families. I'm able to communicate with all of them, and they speak to me very freely and openly. And my specialty on the school board for me would be as a community liaison, bringing that message from the community back to the board, and making the board a very open and approachable place, which they are already, but even more so for the people who may be intimidated. I don't think I intimidate many. Thank you.
I want to also thank the Bismarck Manette Chamber for putting this on. It's a pleasure to be here, and it's a great opportunity to share some thoughts and ideas. My name is Carl Lemke. I grew up in Bismarck, and my kids are growing up in Bismarck. This community has provided so much for me and my family. Running as a school board candidate is probably the greatest way that I can give back to this community and serve this community. I work at the State Historical Society Foundation at the Heritage Center. I'm the parent of three kids with, and I, and my wife, Michelle, and we live here in Bismarck. I have a son in high school, a daughter in middle school, and I have a daughter in elementary school. I get to see what all three kids are learning, how it affects them, how it affects us, how it affects their teachers, and I could make decisions based on, on those types of things at all levels of the school district. Through my involvement in community committees, parent advisory groups, and other civic organizations, I see how school board issues affect everyone in this community. And I will use that and my effective communication with responsible decisions and common sense to make sure that we make the right decisions for all Bismarck and our Bismarck kids.
Thank you, candidates. I will start back with Mr. Halverson. And again, what, what I'm finding is that many of the same questions that applied to the Park Board apply to the school board. Assuming you fill the role of the next Bismarck school board, what is the most important issue that is on or that should be on the agenda?
Well, actu, actually, they're all very important, but some of the things we're confronted with right now is obviously getting the buildings built, but that's a process we're going through, and we're monitoring that process. One of the things we're really looking at is the equity issue. As you know, with the bond issue, approximately $5 million was put aside for equity in the other schools. We do have a infrastructure situation in Bismarck here, at the Bismarck schools and some of the older schools, and it has nothing to do with previous boards or anything like that. It's just that the time has come. Many of these schools are very old, and they need a lot of repair. And the other thing is not only bringing them up to standard as far as repairs, is making them equitable, so that our students have as equitable a possible opportunities and facilities as the new ones that are going up. So that's a big issue. And the, safety is always an issue. I think we're addressing it, but safety is one thing that never, ever diminishes, and we're always going with that, ongoing on that.
I think for me, some of the biggest issues coming up, some of the most important, I will always say communication, because I have found that the information that is available in the school district doesn't always reach everyone it needs to reach, whether it's from the teacher to the parent, from the district to the community. I think we just need to dissipate information better, get the, the knowledge out there. One of my most common resources when I need information is I go to the Bismarck Public Schools webpage. Lot of information. And I trust that that information is accurate and current. Another really important issue for me is the growth. Yes, we need the facilities, and we need to keep everything current and safe. However, the community is changing, and I think we need to be ready for the changes that are coming into the community with the diverse population that is entering. There may be some language barriers, and all sorts of different cultural backgrounds. And I think we need to be ready to adapt to that and welcome them.
I think that there's two major issues that I'm going to be focusing on, and one of those is communication. The current board has done a fair job at communicating on some of the big issues that we have. And I think if we have more collaboration with parents, educators, community program providers, and students, that's vital to our success here in Bismarck. It really doesn't matter if you're talking about building a new school, a standard curriculum, or anything that affects us as Bismarck citizens. Communication is vital. If the, if the parents and the rest of the community can understand what we're trying to accomplish, I think it's easier to, to understand the whole big picture. Planning is a huge issue, and I think that there has been some good plans made, and there's an opportunity to expand that planning. There is a lot of students coming to this town. We're experiencing economic growth, and I, I think that we have to look at what's going to happen in five years and 10 years, make a plan on that, and then just make sure that we are constantly looking at that plan and making sure that we tweak it and that it's correct.
I think that there are three, I, I wouldn't call them issues, I know that's what you're asked for, so I'll talk about something else. I, I think there's three, from a board's perspective, three things that I think that the Bismarck School Board should, should be really looking at. And the first is, and it's been discussed about planning, and I think really, it's much more than that, strategic direction. I really think that the, the school board has done a fantastic job with, with the buildings that they've put in, maintaining the buildings that we have. But we know Bismarck's growing, and so we need to look at where, how are we going to get to where we're going to be in 10 or 20 years? And so in five years from now, when we grow another 1,500 or 2,000 kids, now we're trying to do a second bond, because we need to build again. So I think we need to have, we need to have a long-term plan. The second thing is, and Matt, I think, is going to talk more about this, or maybe a version of this, is the idea of, and I call it administrative oversight. We have a fantastic administration, but what we need them to do is, we, as a board, is give the superintendent certain things that we want her to focus on, and, and one of them is going to be accreditation, or is, is going to be assessment of our children. Not the testing, but how our children are doing in education. Buildings are great. Education is what we're all here for, though.
I would like to say ditto to everything that has been said, but I think, again, it's really about being proactive and having the growth in not only the schools, but in the communities, and making sure that we have the new children be embraced in the community and in the school, but also not forgetting the students that we already have.
I could just go down the list and repeat, and repeat a lot of what's been said, but I think one of the more important things that maybe we just touched on our last meeting is developing a sustainable budget. And so with the legislature coming to town next year, and maybe rewriting the formula for, for school aid, we don't, we don't, it's, it's come up about every two years now that these things change. And now that we have potentially three new buildings with additional staff, we really need to get our feet on the ground and figure out what we can sustain in the future, and what's sustainable, and how it's going to be funded, whether or not we're going to rely more on a mill, or less on a mill, our local tax and property tax, or whether or not the legislature is going to continue to reduce the pressure on local taxpayer and increase state aid. Of course, standards-based grading and Common Core are also some of the primary issues that I'm sure we're going to be picking up in the next year. Thanks.
Mrs. Williams, I will have you start the next question. One of the chamber's hallmark agenda items is cooperative government. As you look at the school board and the cooperative efforts with, with other public schools, with private schools, with the Park District and the city, what's your view on that?
I think just speaking from, for the school, or about the school board that is currently sitting, I find them very cooperative. I think they, you know, we don't see a lot of competitiveness between them. We see them all working together well. They get along well with the superintendent and work together as a team. I don't find a lot of competition, again, other than maybe sports, between the private and parochial schools. I think we all support each other as a community, and I think that's important. We all have to live together, and you don't know which school your neighbor's kid goes to, but they're still your neighbors. And I just think as a cooperative governing body, we need to embrace as much change and individuality as possible. I think having individuals with various backgrounds on the board is important, and that we can then represent as many people in the community as possible.
I think collaboration with other community organizations, other government organizations is very important to the school board. We look, now there's collaboration on the safety issue with school resource officers, and we need to work more in that area, too, and make sure that we have the safest schools. But it really comes back to what we talked about earlier, is the communication, the collaboration, not just with educators and students and parents, but the whole community. We need to find ways to invite the next people to, to be a part of our community, and that takes more than just the school board. That takes our, our city people, it takes our county people, it takes all, all, all our community, the community as a whole.
Collaboration, I think, is really important. You know, we, we, we know that the federal government's money is going to start tightening up. It just has to. There's, the debt is too big. More and more is going to fall on the states and on local governments. And so collaboration makes sense, you know, sharing resources. You know, Carl just brought up an interesting point about the, the collaboration between, you know, the city and, and school district with the school resource officers. And I'll tell you, that's one of the, if I think back, if I had to point to something, why one of the reasons I wanted to run was because I was frustrated with that, because we all know what school, if, if you have high school kids, you know what, what positive effects the, the school resource officers have on this. And I watched this argument in the paper about two, two boards, or two, you know, the school district and the, and the city commission arguing about who's going to pay that, you know, the 50% or 60%. I'm thinking, at the end of the day, we're all paying it. It's all coming out of our pocket largely. And so I struggle with that. And so I think that the idea of collaboration is critical. We live in Bismarck. The Bismarck strategic plan, you know, we should be, we should be mirroring that as a district. But we really have to find ways to, to reach out and pass those, those moments where we have, you know, propriety and what, you know, we're the school district or they're the city commission.
I definitely believe in partnerships, but I think it can go beyond local. We live in the capital city, and so we have some terrific state agencies as well that can help provide free training to our educators, that maybe have grant opportunities that we can engage in, whether it's through the Department of Public Instruction or Department of Health, really taking a look at the resources, not only locally, but statewide, to see what we can take advantage of.
I would, I think that in theory, cooperative, cooperation between government agencies is a fantastic idea. The reality is, there's often tension when, when the two, the two entities sit down at the table. SRO contract is a good example. Both boards are pushing and pulling, because both entities pay, have to pay their share of what goes on. And so that, that shifts over time. Can, is there room for a better relationship between the boards in this town? Of course there is. And if there was, maybe, maybe we could jointly develop traffic plans a little better than we have in the past. And I think we've learned some lessons in the past few years, and I think that there is going to be some growth in those relationships. And so Safe Roads to Schools, I think you'll see that improve, and I think you'll see the cooperation with the Park Board and traffic safety also improve when it comes to the city.
Well, man, this is a, a good question, and I, I just look back and I reflect on the things, and I think one of the things in, in the chamber being here was one of the biggest pushers for the community bowl. And I look at the collaboration there between businesses, the city, the Park Board, and everybody in that community bowl. We just all jumped in, and, and some business people and at the, probably the lead of the chamber said, we got to do something with that, because that benefits everybody, and I think we saw that. And I think that was an excellent example of collaboration, and I'm fortunate enough, and I'm able to serve as a representative on that community bowl, representing the school board. The other things with the cities, you got to understand, I think, too, that we want to work together, and we do work together, but boy, I tell you, there's been some strenuous times there, putting, we're putting strain on the, on the city. You know, we're building these schools, they're responsible basically for the safety, a lot of the safety, the streets, and things like that. So there are going to be some tensions there. And, and I think a lot of times the best ideas come out of those types of tensions. So we do do a lot of collaboration also with the county. Now we have the county superintendent, we have the superintendent that covers the county, so we work together there. Facilities with the Park Board.
Thank you, and I will give the candidates a moment to breathe. One, one housekeeping thing, the chamber would like to apologize to Mr. Sagzveen. His profile was left out of our publication. We, we, we have copies of it available in the back, and I assume it's also on the website. On our website, we have profiles of all the candidates where they were able to express their thoughts, and, you know, no offense, men.
None taken. I, I do appreciate the prompt response from Kelvin, even though he was probably sitting on water someplace, and, and Zach's response, too. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Fair enough. Next question, and I will ask Ms. Harper to take this one first on, is there are challenges and opportunities and priorities of the fiscal responsibility, the budgetary, I should say, the budgetary responsibility, the rapid growth we're experiencing, and the need for quality, quality education? What's your approach to balancing those?
My approach really would be twofold. First, making sure that we are proactive and not reactive. The other thing is really getting the input from the people on the streets, getting input from the parents, from the business owners, and from the kids themselves. Some of our children, whether they're a kindergartner or a senior, may have some great ideas on how to move forward in anything from getting quality teachers to a type of program that they would want. So I would really want to get input from the boots on the ground.
I, I think the intersection between budget and rapid growth is a, is a tough question, especially when we're getting a lot of pressures for adding computers and iPads, and 1,000 new students would mean 1,000 new computers, and we just don't have the money for 1,000 new computers or 1,000 iPads. So it's important to pilot projects, not rely only on, on new technologies, but really focus on the method, focus on our teachers, and, and give them the opportunity, whether or not it's a teacher's aide or an additional, a co-teacher in the room, to accommodate a larger classroom, if that's necessary, for a year or a smaller period of time, to make sure that, that that large classroom isn't detracting from the rest of the kids, and that, and that we really give the students and the teachers all the opportunities that we can provide as a, as a board.
Well, I think that the number one thing I always look, look at as a board member in when I make a decision concerning a budget issue or whatever, is how does it impact the classroom? How does it impact the, the child's education? Because the number one, we can, we can debate a number of things, but the number one thing that impacts education is what goes on in that classroom. We need to make sure that our teachers are, they have the equipment, they have the training, and our students are ready to learn. So it's, it's really a, like Matt said, it, it, trying to balance that with 1,000 new students and trying to do that with the students you presently have, it becomes a tough balancing act. But I think that's where we rely on the administration, to bring us good, sound advice, and we take that advice. We scrutinize it, we ask questions, and the big thing is, we ask for accountability. If we're going to spend money there, what are we getting in return? Or more importantly, what are the kids getting? How does it impact what goes on in that classroom? Thank you.
I think a very important thing when it comes to balancing the difference between the budget and equality education with fiscal responsibility is prioritizing the needs. I think a goal of a computer per child is wonderful. We just got a home computer at my house again in the last six months. So needs versus wants, they need chairs, they need desks. Computers cost a lot more than a desk. How wonderful it is that we live in a community where we can even consider just having a classroom full of computers where they can rotate through. When it comes to things like playground equipment and safety measures, to me, those are probably a higher priority, and we just have to take a list of what's important. Overall, are, are our children learning? Are they learning at a competitive rate? And I think it comes down to that all the time. All of the other extras are nice, but we really need to meet their needs, and I think we're in a position to do that without a lot of tremendous challenges. We can meet their needs, and how wonderful for us.
I think all, all the things that we're talking about right now all stem from a good plan, in that we need to make sure that we're making a plan and working the plan. We got to ask a lot of questions about the priorities of what, what the needs are. We got to look at those priorities, we got to look at those needs, we have to look at how many are going to benefit, and what do they benefit? And what does it mean to the student? What does it mean to the district? What does it mean to the community? And as long as we make that part of the plan and prioritize, even if we can't get it now, put it part of the plan to get it when we can get it, especially if it's something that's so necessary to what, what the Bismarck School District is trying to do here.
Well, I started with the idea of strategic directions, strategic plan, and I would stay with that and echo what everyone said here. You know, the city commission just recently, by this last year, has come up with aligning their budget with their strategic plan. Imagine that, having a budget that's aligned, that goes five or 10 or 15 years out, you know where your money's going to be spent. I, I know, there's no reason we can't do something like that from a school board perspective. And then aligning that with, with education, what is it that we And then aligning that with education. What is it that we want our children, how do we measure proficiency? Where is it when our children, when we say we've met the standards? Imagine when all those things are aligned. We then know what's going to be most important because those are the things that are going to make all those things happen. And that's what planning does. And then sharing that information with the community. We have a diverse community. We have an intelligent community. We have a community that wants everything for our children, but we understand it's going to cost. So we have to talk. It isn't just, you know, a board making decisions and then saying, you know, we've made it so. It's listening to the community, listening to educators and then bringing that all together.
And again, as we've had people join us, I will repeat, there are some note cards in the back. If you have questions for the group, please fill those out, hand them to Mr. Hollitt and we will filter them into the discussion. Mr. Lemke, you're up on this one. There is a raging local and national debate currently on Common Core. What is your position and view on Common Core?
Have we all been waiting for this question? It certainly is taking up a big portion of the discussion right now. And I fielded probably more calls than I probably should have, not even being a board member yet. But I'm going to say it this way, that I really think that we need a standard. They've been around and a standard is important to us and it shows accountability. I, however, want to make sure that we do what we can to make sure that Bismarck gets to decide how we teach our kids to get to that standard. And that's really important to me, that Bismarck gets to make those decisions.
Common Core. You know, I like to say, are we talking the lowercase common core? Are we talking the big bad uppercase common core? Educational standards are important. How do we know how our children are doing? Educational standards have existed since we've had A, B, C, D, E and F even. Teachers always knew when kids are doing well or not well. It was very subjective at one time. It's gotten much more objective. We now know as parents, as educators, as a community, how people are, how our children are doing because we can understand what the standards are. Standards are great. What's unfortunate, I think, is that Common Core has become or has turned into a life of its own and it has nothing to do with the standards. And it's all about what we, what somebody thinks somebody else is doing to us. And the problem with that is that it goes to communication. I think that North Dakotans are kind of trusting. And so we adopted these good standards. Just expecting that we're all professionals and why would anybody question it? Not knowing what would happen. Unfortunately, it's happened. And what's even more unfortunate is that we haven't got ahead of it to sit down and really have that intelligent communication. We've allowed outsiders to come in and tell us what Common Core means to us. And that's why I talk uppercase or lowercase. Standards are good.
I will definitely agree with what has been said in regards to standards. I support our educators as they have to have standards across the board in education. And until the standards are looked at again by the experts in the field, the educators that are out there doing the work, I think that we should support our educators. And until then, making sure that we as the district are able to decide on the curriculum and how our students are being taught.
Well, it's for sure, no one supports low standards. That's for sure. Problem is, we have a history of federal programs that haven't gone very well. No Child Left Behind and Race to the Top are all, both kind of examples of programs that have been what seemed like a good idea to begin with. And they've kind of frankly gone astray and Mr. Hallerson could probably know better than I do on that. But just from an education perspective, I support high standards. I support a North Dakota standard. And I would support having our district go into our community and review these standards grade by grade. And whether or not we need to adopt higher or better standards, I think our community has the right to take a look at that, offer their input. And if there needs to be changes, we need to make changes and we'll just see how it goes.
Well, just going to echo what everybody else said too. I'm a firm believer in standards. I've been affiliated with standards for a number of years. We've had mandated standards in North Dakota for 20 some years. I'm going to look at a little, I'm going to go a little bit different approach. Where did these come from? It's interesting. I'm sitting in the chamber office and really what happened is, is business people throughout the United States, business and industry, said, our kids are not coming into the workforce well equipped. Higher education said, too much remediation. So what happened? They got together, the chamber, business people, they got together with the governors, individual governors of every state and said, what can we do? Without interfering with local control and state control. This is where they came from, to develop some unique standards. I've read them twice. They're really boring and some of them are difficult. We've, all this discussion, we don't talk about the standards themselves. We talk about peripheral issues, curriculum, all of those things. But let's look who's demanding these and they rightfully should.
While I think it's important to have both sides, because apparently there are sides, pro and con. I find that much of the information regarding the Common Core standards that is currently in the public is misinformation. And I really think that's a shame. I think we could better use our time getting accurate information. Last night, I went to an elementary school and one of the support staff members asked me, what about the high school Common Core English standards? Why are they taking literature out of it and only having information technology for reading? So again, I went to the Bismarck Public School website and I looked up the literature standards for the Common Core. And they do include literature. There is a collaborative curriculum that allows the teachers to build their curriculum by subject and that support their instructional practices. The Common Core math problem that we've, many of us have heard about, I've watched the circle video. And that is a very, very basic explanation of one simple chart. And I think the panic needs to stop and I think we all just need to work together, find all the information we can and make our own decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Sagsveen, I think you're due for the first question on this one. The school system's role is to prepare students for the next step, which may be college, maybe trade school, maybe the workforce. How do you view that as to what the right thing is to prepare our students for the next step?
That's a, I think it's a good question and it really depends on each individual student. What do they think is going to be good for them to be successful in the future? We have, whether or not it's going off to college or going off to trade school, like you said. We've got some of the programs that we've been developing. I just saw some results that show that people who took some of our career and tech ed courses, their reading scores and math scores for those individuals was higher than kids who hadn't taken two or more career and tech ed scores. Now, to me, for whatever reason, when I first saw that, I was really surprised. But maybe there's a plausible explanation for that, but it's, I don't know the answer. But it's, I think some of the STEM coursework that we've been doing and some of the different career and tech ed courses that we have have really been changing kind of the traditional concepts of what we believe are trade schools and are traditional schools. So it's going to be, it's a difficult question to answer.
This is a question and something that I've been struggling with for years. And it comes down to collaboration, that connection between higher ed and secondary ed. It's been very frustrating to say the least. I know I was a finalist and for the State Board of Higher Education and I was interviewed by the governor and they asked about remediation and things like that. And maybe that's why I didn't get appointed. Maybe I'm lucky not getting on there. But anyway, it's, now we are starting to collaborate and find out, you know, what do the colleges want? What do they need? We've never had that before. And Common Core is a result of that too, I might add. But working together, you know, tell us what our kids need to know. Work with us. And don't sit there and complain about us that our kids aren't ready. Well, tell us what we need. And that really hasn't happened very often, but now we're seeing that. And that is a big issue. It's the collaboration so we can get those kids workforce ready and college ready.
I think as far as workforce preparedness is concerned, it greatly depends upon the individual. But also some of the things that I see lacking in young people, when there are things lacking. There are some wonderful young employees out there, fresh out of high school. But personal responsibility and accountability and by being held to these standards, reaching for a four when you start out at a two and have a place to grow, I think that's very important. Whether it's a letter grade, a number grade, a percentage, whatever the grades are. We need to allow our students to grow into responsible young adults. My first job out of high school was the Air Force because my two years in Burger King wasn't looking like a career goal at that time. Personal responsibility in the Air Force was not an option. It was wonderful for me. Now I'm self-employed and I went to an accredited college based on my GI bill. These are all options that I didn't have a college plan. I would like for my son to have a college plan. My husband and I would like for him to have college financing and wouldn't it be nice if it's affordable?
I think our Bismarck students are our greatest resource. And I think that it's important that we provide what they need to make their next choice. Whether they choose that they're going to just go right into the workforce or if they're going to be part of a workforce training or if they're going to go into the higher education or research institute. We need to look at what their needs are to move on to that next step and provide that. So we learn from the colleges of what happens when our students get there and what we need to do to prepare them. We look at the training, the training centers, the local colleges and what do they need to get there and provide that? We also need to make sure that we're providing opportunities for them to possibly look at careers earlier if they want to. If they see something that they like, that should be part of the training and it is, we want to just make sure to keep doing that and expand that.
I'm on a board in, well, it's actually a coalition. It's called the North Dakota College and Career Ready Coalition. It's set up by Department of Public Instruction. And they have members from higher education, from educators across the state, from some of the regional education cooperatives, parents, business leaders. And one of the things that Superintendent Basler has asked us to look at is, is how do we do this? How do we, how do we find that, you know, mapping that or ensuring that students, they have a transition into the next life after graduation? Whether it be a college track or a trade or the military or an entrepreneurial thing. And so those are some of the conversations that are happening in the state of North Dakota, which I think is really good. You know, I would say from a school perspective, a district perspective, we have to have balance. We have to offer them obviously an education. But that education can be kind of, we can have it kind of expansive. I think we have to let children explore a bit. You know, my daughter's a junior. She's interested in the medical field. She doesn't know psychology or medical. So she's been going through a couple of different things to see what it is she might want to do as a junior. And the last thing I would say is, we need to be able to help our children as they get older, figure out where it is they want to go. And as Carl said, let's help them develop what that plan is for college or afterlife, after high school.
I think it really comes down to the partnership, not only with the parents, but with the teachers. When I take a look at my kids right now, they spend more time at school than they do with me. And so really having that partnership with the teachers and supporting the administrators as they look at other curriculum, including social skills curriculum that can teach the social and emotional sides of things. Also, starting at a very young age, the project learning. My son, who's a kindergartner, was working on pumpkins and they had to do a presentation to the superintendent and they had to do measuring for math. And so I think it really does start at the very beginning of their educational career. But knowing that it's not only about academics, it's about the skills that they can learn to be a creative person in society.
Once again, thank you to all the candidates. Coming back to Mr. Holly. Do you support, and to clarify again, some of these questions had come through the chamber feedback from members. Some of them are from people that are in the audience tonight. This one is from the audience tonight. Do you support North Dakota rejecting federal funding of K-12, it says 13%, in favor of state funding and 100% local control?
Yeah, I believe in local control. If there would be a way to, you know, we don't accept any of the race for, race for the top money. You know, we don't, we don't, we don't receive those, that type of money. You know, there's certain money that comes with Title I, you know, different title grants. And if we could do it from a state perspective and the state said that we're going to fund it and/or we're going to fund it from local taxpayers, you know, from property taxes, great. I have no problems with that. The only issue we need to understand is that the federal government oftentimes has mandates. And as we all know, there's even unfunded mandates. So we still may be stuck with the law. And that's the only problem with that is that federal law still supersedes state law. And so if there's a US code that tells us we have to do something, you know, then in my case, I'm thinking, well, then why wouldn't we want to take the money to at least manage part of that? Because then it's less pressure on the local taxpayers. On the other hand, if it's, if it's a race for the top or an optional program and we don't want it, then we shouldn't have it. And I actually think North Dakota's done a really good job with that.
I definitely believe in local control as well, as well as working with the state for state standards. In regards to federal funding, again, we have the certain mandates, but also taking a look at, are there federal programs out there that meet the vision and mission of the community and of the Bismarck School Board? And if it is, then taking a look at those federal opportunities to see if it can be a good match.
My opinion is if the legislature decides that it wants to take over a federal program, then so be it. And continue the same level of funding, that's fine. I think the more difficult question is whether or not we want to operate the program the same way and under the same restrictions that the federal government has required. And in all likelihood, the answer is no. We would probably make a large number or at least some changes to that. And I think that we would have to rely upon our administration and the Department of Public Instruction to figure out the right way to do that so that there is a guideline established from the state to the local districts so that we can adequately and consistently throughout the state operate under those types of programs. Whether or not it's a Title I program or Head Start. Thanks.
I've been, I've worked with many grants as an educator and I had five federal grants when I worked with the adult ed. And I can tell you, when I first started with them, the entanglement, the things that you had to do was unbelievable. But I think throughout the years, I think as the funding has gotten less and less too, we've found that some of the restrictions have been lifted. And while there is some cumbersome restrictions, most of them have dissipated. I think the big thing you need to look at is the Head Start. Head Start is a very valuable program and that has been cut funding. So we are, and we urged the state last time to pick up the funding for that and unfortunately, it didn't happen. But that's something that really is important and jeopardized. And if the federal government wants to give it to us, I think it's okay. I believe in total control. There's no doubt about that. You've got to also understand that we see funds for special ed through the IDEA Act. And that is federal law and you're never really going to change that, probably rightfully so. So I think that, you know, 13% is a lot less. It used to be about 23 to 24%. So it has gotten less, but I think that if the state doesn't want to fund it, we need it someplace. Thank you.
I think local control is important as long as we are meeting or exceeding the national standards. If we're going to reject federal funding outright, what is the point of having a federal government? I'm not an anarchist. We elect those leaders to legislate our country and individuals by state. I don't think we need to be paranoid about accepting federal funding. But again, by meeting or exceeding federal standards, we can have that local control and simply say, here's your standard, here we are. And then we can just carry on and continue educating our kids to the best of our abilities.
I think reduced federal funding is already happening. We see it already. It's been noted here. And, but somehow we're going to have to replace that. And I think it's going to be a collaboration thing with the state too to make sure that we continue to have them help us fund our local schools. I think that some of the federal funding that we get is pretty vital to our programs. I talked to an administrator at one of our elementary schools and the Title I- schools and the Title I money that we get here in Bismarck is very valuable. And it comes with a, a lot of local control on how we can get kids to school, specifically in socio-economic, uh, less-than-standard schools. And I think that when we use that federal money like that, I've heard some of the programs, and I don't have more than a minute to tell you about it, but, um, what I can tell you is that they're great programs and they were developed here in Bismarck with Title I money. Uh, we also talk about IDEA Act here too, that was mentioned also. When we talk about the special needs student in Bismarck, that is vital funding for them. They are Bismarck students also and we wanna make sure to give them the same opportunities as every Bismarck student.
All right, a couple notes. First of all, I, I, before we get to the final, I also want to thank this group of candidates. You and the, and the park board set an excellent example for the city commission candidates on, on paying attention to time. Not to be too subtle. Um, I was also, uh, told to mention, uh, that Zach and Calvin have been posting to Facebook and Twitter. I assume that's the chamber site? Chamber site, so that if you, uh, if the candidates, uh, want to, uh, to link to that, tag themselves, tag themselves. Yeah, I'm showing my, yeah. Um, and, uh, so those are up and will be up now. Um, we will go through and touch on the, the final round of questions. Again, I'll, I'll reserve unless something really earth-shattering comes up in this round of question. Uh, we're going to wrap it up and I will have, uh, Mr. Sagsby and start this one, uh, with the broad question. What, what is your vision for Bismarck schools?
My vision is to, um, it's, it's twofold really. It's to make sure that we proceed in a structurally, um, appropriate manner, whether or not it's maintaining our older buildings or building new buildings. We wanna make sure that we efficiently use our resources, uh, make sure that all our spaces are, are, are filled up. Um, in both, in the other side of that coin is to make sure that we give the superintendent the right, uh, message for her leadership and leading the teachers. It's not, when you're superintendent, I'm not one of course, but, um, I think we need to provide the superintendent with the right level and the right idea of encouragement so that she can speak to the teachers and make them believe and understand that what they're doing is of utmost importance to our, our kids and our community. Uh, and really, and really make sure that that message gets spread. Thanks.
Well, kind of echo what, what Matt said too. And, and my vision is, is obviously is, is, we talked a lot about world-class leadership and the world-class, or world-class schools and, and I believe, I really believe in that we can do that and, and with our community. I, I really think too, that, uh, we talked about planning. Planning has been mentioned a lot here and, and I think, uh, there were some couple good points. Uh, we do have strategic plans. There's been strategic building plans in this, in Bismarck for years. They're there, they've been utilized. We recently had the one where, when we came into the building, uh, to build the three new schools and everything. It's a five-year plan. You go beyond five years, your demographics are gonna be off. You're, you're, uh, you're not gonna be able to predict. So we got a five-year plan. One of the things that really causes some problems, and this is why we need to tie that budget with our growth, is we don't know what the legislature's gonna do. They're probably gonna throw out, restructure property taxes. So it's really tough to sit down and do a good job of planning of what, how we're gonna fit everything together unless we know, they, they provide eighty percent of our funding right now. So, thank you and thank you to the chamber.
My vision for the future is one that includes balanced representation at the school board. Um, I think it's very important to have highly qualified individuals and we clearly have them. I think it's also important to have other qualifications being a level of trust. I babysit for teachers. That's a pretty good level of trust in the community. New people move to town. I have a friend. I met her on the first day of school and the next year I was her emergency contact for her children. I think in a community like this, and it's the place like North Dakota, we know we have that background where people just walk up, they take you at face value, and it's important to have that representation at every level. Um, in addition, the growing diversity is something that I'm very passionate about and I really look forward to, um, communicating with so many different kinds of people and bringing their individual needs to the board. Thank you.
I think Bismarck students are probably the best in North Dakota. We have the largest school district in North Dakota and I think things are going well here. I wanna make sure that we continue with that. Um, I think we look at our needs. We look at our resources. We throw it all on the table. We talk about it, we communicate, we plan for what's necessary and we work that plan and continue to communicate about it. That's the best vision we can have. Education is the most important thing for our Bismarck kids. It's the most important thing for our economy. They are our best resource and we wanna make sure they're prepared for the next step that they choose.
So I had a prepared statement because I knew what the question was gonna be from the last round. Um, and then they used all my words. Um, world-class, uh, you know, communication, all those. Um, I'll, I'll say this. I think, um, we elect a school board for a reason and that's because we, we can't bring forty or seventy thousand people together and come up with, with ideas. Uh, 'cause everybody has great ideas. So we have a school board. Um, and, and they're charged in some ways to be the leader. Um, but they're, they're representative leader. They're, they're speaking for the community. We don't, we don't, we, they, the board doesn't please everybody. Um, but it is all about balance. It's bringing in those resources and our children and, and bringing that all together so we get the best education, um, for the most effective, effective resources, utilization of resources as possible. Um, I'll say, I just wanna close with this. I, when, when I was in Africa, um, I, I actually witnessed a, a class. We built a lot of classrooms. Um, and I, I witnessed a class being taught underneath a mango tree. And, and what was the common denominator between Ghana, uh, northern Ghana and, and North Dakota? In that classroom, there were children and there were teachers. And in the end, that's what education is. Thanks.
My vision for Bismarck Public Schools really is about the kids, ensuring that the students obtain the skills to be healthy, resourceful, and engaged in learning. And by doing so, we can provide support to the administrators and the educators that we have.
Thank you again to the candidates for participating. Um, and let's give them a round of applause.